Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the meeting in order. Mrs. Burns, roll call, please.
Mr. Parentano.
Present.
Mr. Allen.
Present.
Mrs. Bowman.
Here.
Ms. Boyle.
Here.
Mrs. Hollenbach.
Here.
Mr. Kovitz.
Here.
Mr. Marington.
Here.
Mr. Cirillo.
Here.
And Mr. Sullivan.
Present.
We have a quorum.
Thank you, Mrs. Burns. Please stand for a pledge of allegiance.
To the flag, the United States of America, to the republic which it stands, one nation-
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, all. This is the public board meeting, August 18th, at Maple Point Auditorium. Our executive session statement, the board met an executive session this evening prior to this meeting to discuss matters of employment, issues related to labor relations, the purchase or lease of real property, matters related to litigation, and/or matters related to school safety and security. Mrs. Burns, any announcements?
No announcements.
Thank you, Mrs. Burns. Dr. McGee, superintendent's report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Parentano. First, I'd like to review the enrollment report found in Board Docs. There are just under 9,400 students enrolled in the shamany, as of the most recent enrollment report. Fifty-seven in our virtual academy and 317 in our technical school, not concluded in that 9,400. We have the smallest graduating class starting this year, under 600, yet one of the largest freshman classes entering, over 700. Also following up large classes are the eighth and seventh grade in our middle schools, pushing 800, just under 800. So that's our enrollment report. Some updates, and to answer some frequently asked questions about reopening, we have a new hotline for reopening. Mrs. Trish Murray is manning that hotline to answer your questions. The number is in today's email, but if you're listening, it's (215) 809-8777, or you can email Mrs. Murray at questions@nashamany.org. She knows just about everything about the shamany, and if she doesn't, she will find it out.
We're going to pause the meeting for technical difficulties.
All right, I'll continue.
All right, and now that our technical difficulties have been resolved, we're going to continue the meeting. Go ahead, Dr. McGee.
There seems to be some confusion out there about the idea of synchronous learning versus asynchronous learning, so some analogies or links to more common things. Think of synchronous learning as a Zoom meeting. Think of asynchronous learning as learning on Canvas. Now, that didn't help a whole lot of people, so let me try something else. Think about synchronous learning as FaceTiming, whereas asynchronous learning is Facebook. And think about synchronous as live TV, where asynchronous is on demand. So that should help. There has been a great demand for more asynchronous opportunities face-to-face via the computer. We're going to build them in. But also, there is the increasing concern of families that they can't, their children can't go through that type of rigor during the day, to be period by period in a particular spot for obligations of the family. So we now are searching for both synchronous options and alternatives to those synchronous options for those who can't access that. So more information on that will be coming. Student devices, one of the biggest frequently asked questions. Our IT department is ready to go. All students will have an individual device at the start of school this year, all right? We have 2,000 Chromebooks on order. That order probably compares, pales to other districts in the nation, so we don't believe we're going to get that by the start of school, but we will get that eventually. Our kindergarteners, in the meantime, while we wait for their Chromebooks, will get iPads from the classrooms. Our fifth graders are slated to get an upgrade to a new Chromebook. And all that information will be coming out, an email tomorrow from Mrs. Burkholder. And the IT department will do their normal outstanding job the week of August 14th through September 3rd, distributing this technology to families. And finally, the idea of orientation days in September. The goal of September is to prepare us to get back to school in a hybrid model in October. That's, that is really the goal. Bring kids in a half a grade at a time, work with their teachers, work with the entire staff to make sure they know what to do, and hopefully, virus permitting, conditions permitting, we can move to the blue-red hybrid in, in October. I think the choice of the word orientation may not have been the best choice on, on my part. That day is a full school, school day, where half of the grade comes in. If, if parents permit, they're welcome to come in. If parents choose, they can keep them at home. They can ride the school bus. They'll experience the new entry procedures. They'll experience the new moving between class procedures. They'll experience each of their teachers that they would see that, that day, the new lunch procedures, all the new procedures, including the new exit procedures. So the idea of student orientation day is a full day of school, parents, parents permitting, to get them orientated to, one, what their new class is, who their new teachers are, and what some of the new procedures are. So again, I don't know if you heard it before the audio kicked out. For questions, we have Mrs. Trish Murray answering a hotline at (215) 809-8777. Mrs. Murray will happily answer your questions about reopening, and if she doesn't know the answer, she will find the answer. And Trish and Mr. Stanley will be developing a frequently asked question list that will populate on the website shortly. That's the superintendent's report. Mr. Parentano?
Thank you very much, Dr. McGee. This brings us to our first public comment period. You can approach the podium. Do we have a call-in sheet?
Yes, Jay Saragin.
Not, you want to wait to the second period? That's perfectly fine.
That was it.
That was the only sign-up. Is there anyone here otherwise that would wish to speak during public comment? Seeing none, we're going to move the agenda on. Brings us to section two. I'd like to make a master motion for Agenda Items 2.01, Two Minutes, 2.02, Treasurers Report, 2.03, Check Register and Procurement Card Purchases, 2.04 Investments, and 2.05 Exonerations. May I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Hollenbach. Any comments, questions, or concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes nine to zero. Brings us to section three. Mr. Sullivan, please.
I'd like to make a master motion to approve Item 3.01, Leaves of Absence, 3.02, Revised Return Some Leave, and 3.03, Appointments.
Thank you. A motion's been made. May I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Kovitz. Any comments, questions, or concerns? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Motion passes nine to zero. Mr. Sullivan?
3.04, Co-Curricular Appointments. Resolved that the Shamany Board of School Directors hereby approves the following co-curricular appointments for certified staff, subject to the following conditions. In the event the activity is canceled for any reason, including acts of God or pursuant to an order by the Governor of Pennsylvania, Secretary of Health, prior to the commencement, the coach advisor will receive no compensation and/or, in the event the activity has commenced and then canceled for any reason, including acts of God or pursuant to an order by the Governor of Pennsylvania, Secretary of Health, the coach advisor shall receive proradic compensation for the period of services rendered.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Motion's been made. May we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Bowman. Any comments, questions, or concerns?
I just want to verify, it says for any reason including, that's just some examples of what the reasons are. It could be any other reason related to the pandemic or anything else. Is that correct?
That is, that is correct, Ms. Hollenbach.
And just for the, for the public at home that may be watching, this particular resolution includes a list of 85 persons. Any more questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes nine to zero. Mr. Sullivan?
3.05, Ancillary Appointments. Resolved that the Shamany Board of School Directors hereby approves the following ancillary appointments for certified staff, subject to the following conditions. In the event the activity is canceled for any reason, including acts of God or pursuant to an order by the Governor of Pennsylvania, Secretary of Health, prior to the commencement, the coach advisor will receive no compensation and/or, in the event the activity has commenced and then canceled for any reason, including acts of God or pursuant to an order by the Governor or Pennsylvania Secretary of Health, the coach advisor shall receive proradic compensation for the period of services rendered.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. A motion's been made. May I have a second? That is?
Irene. Irene.
Second by Mrs. Boyle. Any comments, questions, or concerns? This list includes 47 people. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes nine to zero. Brings us to section 4.1. Mrs. Hollenbach, please.
I'd like to make a motion for personal support, 4.1, NESP, Article 7, Section 5-1, Wage Adjustments. Whereas, the Shamany School District has a collective bargaining agreement with the Shamany Education Support Professionals Association through June 30th, 2022. And whereas Article 7, Section 5-1 of the agreement permits the association and the district to put forth committees to discuss possible wage discrepancies based on marking conditions. And whereas, the committees for the district and the association have met to discuss the need for wage increases to non-grandfathered employees to attract and retain qualified employees in the area of bus driver, van drivers, and certain skilled laborers. And whereas, the district committee has recommended increases to these employee groups, now therefore be it resolved that the Shamany Board of School Directors hereby approves the committee's recommendation that the following wage increase is being proved as followed.
Thank you, Mrs. Hollenbach. A motion's been made. May I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Sullivan. Any comments, questions, or concerns?
I just wanted to specify that there are 11 classifications of salaries that we are recommending to increase in this category.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Hollenbach. Any additional comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes nine to zero. Mrs. Hollenbach?
I'd like to make a master motion to approve 4.02, Retirements, Resignations, and Assignments, 4.03, Leaves of Absence, 4.04, Revised Leaves of Absence, and 4.05, Appointments.
Thank you, Ms. Hollenbach. A motion's been made. May I have a second?
Second.
By?
Paul, was it?
I'm sorry, I'm looking the wrong way. The, the sound really bounces around up here. It's difficult. Second by Mr. Cirillo. Any comments, questions, or concerns? I would just like to take an opportunity to note that there are three employees, Danielle Hewitt, 28 years of service, Charles Moser with 30 years of service, and a Michael Sheridan with 32 years of service that will be leaving the shamany. We want to thank you for all the dedication that you've had to the shamany and its students over the years. Any additional comments? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes nine to zero. Mr. Kovitz, please.
Resolved that the Shamany Board of School Directors hereby approves the following co-curricular appointments for support staff, subject to the following conditions. In the event the activity is canceled for any reason, including acts of God or pursuant to an order by the Governor of Pennsyl, or Pennsylvania Secretary of Health, prior to the commencement, the coach advisor will receive no compensation and/or, in the event the activity has commenced and then canceled for any reason, including acts of God or pursuant to an order by the Governor or Pennsylvania Secretary of Health, the coach advisor shall receive proradic compensation for the period of services rendered.
Thank you, Mr. Kovitz. A motion's been made. May I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Hollenbach. Any comments, questions, or concerns? Just for the public watching at home, this particular list includes 27 people. Any additional comments? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes nine to zero. Mr. Kovitz, please.
Resolved that the Shamany Board of School Directors hereby approves the following ancillary appointments for support staff, subject to the following conditions. In the event the activity is canceled for any reason, including acts of God or pursuant to an order by the Governor or Pennsylvania Secretary of Health, prior to the commencement, the coach advisor will receive no compensation and/or, in the event the activity has commenced and then canceled for any reason, including acts of God or pursuant to an order by the Governor or Pennsylvania Secretary of Health, the coach advisor shall receive proradic compensation for the period of services rendered.
Thank you, Mr. Kovitz. A motion's been made. May I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Sullivan. Any comments, questions, or concerns? This list includes 12 people. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes nine to zero. Brings us to section five, 5.01. Mrs. Bowman, please.
5.01, Title I, Planning and Approve, Planning Approval. Whereas, the following Shamany Schools have been identified as Title I Schools, Albert Schweitzer Elementary School, Herbert Hoover Elementary School, Joseph E. Fertabar Elementary School, Tewanka Elementary School, and Walter Miller Elementary School. Whereas, each school has developed a school improvement plan based upon a thorough review of the essential practices to advance educational programs and processes and improve student achievement. Whereas, the action plans that we will be implementing address our specific school needs, including strategies to provide educational opportunities and instructional strategies for all students, and each of the student groups increases the amount and quality of learning time and provides equity in the curriculum, which may include programs, activities, and courses necessary to provide a well-rounded education. These plans address the needs of all children in the school, but particularly the needs of those at risk and not meeting the challenges challenging state academic standards. Whereas, the school-level plans has been duly reviewed by the Building Administrator, Superintendent of Schools, and will be formally approved by the District's Board of Education, per guidelines required by the Pennsylvania Department of Education. And whereas, the school-level plans addresses all the required components prescribed by the Pennsylvania Department of Education, meets ESSA requirements, reflects evidence-based strategies that meet the three highest levels of evidence outlined in ESSA, has a high probability of improving student achievement, has sufficient LEA leadership and support to ensure successful implementation. Now therefore be it resolved that we, the Pennsylvania Department of Education, grant formal approval to implement this school-level plans.
Thank you, Mrs. Bowman. A motion's been made. May I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Kovitz. Any comments, questions, or concerns on this item? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes nine to zero. 5.02, Mr. Marington, would you please?
5.02, Pandemic Emergency Instructional Time. Whereas, the Shamany Board of School Director previously approved an emergency pandemic declaration, now therefore be it resolved that the Shamany Board of School Directors hereby approves the attached emergency instructional time template as per Section 520.1 for the 2020, 2021 school year.
Thank you, Mr. Marington. A motion's been made. May I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Sullivan. Any comments, questions, or concerns on this item? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes nine to zero. Mrs. Boyle, would you please read 5.03?
I'd like to make a motion to approve 5.03, Revised 2020, 2021 School Calendar. Whereas, the COVID-19 pandemic has forced a delay in the first day of school, now therefore be it resolved that the Shamany Board of School Directors hereby approves the attached revised school calendar with the first day of school for students as September 8th.
Thank you, Mrs. Boyle. A motion's been made. May I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Bowman. Any comments, questions, or concerns? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes nine to zero. Mrs. Boyle, would you please read 504?
I'd like to make a motion to approve 5.04, Flexible Instructional Day Application to PDE. Whereas, the Pennsylvania Department of Education permits districts to designate flexible instructional days. Now therefore be it resolved that the Shamany Board of School Directors hereby approves the attached Flexible Instructional Days, FID, application for 2020, 2021, and two subsequent years to be submitted to the Pennsylvania Department of Education.
Thank you, Mrs. Boyle. A motion's been made. May I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Kovitz. Any comments, questions, or concerns on this item? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes nine to zero. Mrs. Boyle, 5.05, please.
I'd like to make a motion to approve 5.05, Out-of-District Placements. Whereas, in order to meet the educational programming needs of specific students, it may be advantageous to utilize the services of out-of-district providers. Now therefore be it resolved that the Shamany Board of School Directors hereby approves the out-of-district placements identified below.
Thank you, Mrs. Boyle. A motion's been made. May I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Sullivan. Any comments, questions, or concerns? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes nine to zero. Mr. Allen, would you please read 6.01?
Thank you, Mr. Parentano. I'd like to bring a motion to the table. 6.01, Stipulation and License Agreement between Lower Southampton Township and the Bucks County Intermediate Unit. Whereas, the Shamany Board of School Directors, School District, have an existing lease agreement dated August 16th, 2016, as amended with the Bucks County Intermediate Unit Number 22, IU, for their use of the Lower Southampton Elementary School, located at Seven School Lane, Lower Southampton Township, Bucks County, Pennsylvania. And whereas, Lower Southampton Township held a hearing on the IU application and waiver requests on September 27th, 2017, in connection with a preliminary and final land development plan filed with the township on January 4th, 2017, to provide additional parking, whereas, areas to serve the educational programs by the IU. And whereas, the Lower Southampton Township Zoning Hearing Board, here and after the zoning board, conducted a hearing on August 15th, 2017, pursuant to the IU application for zoning variances, including an interpretation appeal, and also variances requiring direct access to an arterial or collector street, Bridgetown Pike, and forego the installation of electronic vehicle charging stations. And whereas, the zoning board did, on September 29th, 2017, deny all variance relief, which was subsequently appealed to the Court of Common Pleas of Bucks County, docket number 2017-0730625, by the IU on October 26th, 2017. And whereas, the Township Board of Supervisors denied the application for preliminary and final land development approval and requested waivers on September 27th, 2017. And whereas, on or about November 13th, 2017, the IU appealed the township's denial of preliminary and final land development, along with the requested waivers to the Bucks County Court of Common Pleas, docket number 2017-06946-40. And whereas, the school district intervened in these matters on November 17th, 2017. And whereas, the parties, in the interest of avoiding further litigation, wished to resolve the two pending matters pursuant to the stipulation and settlement agreement presented this evening. And whereas, part of the stipulation and agreement resolving the litigation, the township and the school district wished to enter into a license agreement for the township's use of the existing directional sign located on the property at the corner of Bridgetown Pike and School Lane. Now therefore be it resolved that the Shamany Board of School Directors approves the attached stipulation stipulation and license agreement, conditioned upon Lower Southampton Township, the Lower Southampton Township Zoning Hearing Board, and Bucks County Intermediate Unit Number 22 approving same at their next respective board meeting, and authorizes the board president and secretary to execute both the license agreement and stipulation in the form presented at the meeting. And the board secretary, board president, secretary, solicitor, and other officers of the School District are authorized to take all action required to effectuate the license agreement and stipulation.
Thank you very much, Mr. Allen. You did quite well. A motion's been made. May I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Cirillo, was that?
Yep.
That's by Mr. Cirillo. Any comments, questions, or concerns? At this time, I would just ask the solicitor if he could just make some comment about the mutual nature of this agreement, rather than legalese form that it's presented into the public.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Pierrotano. This is a matter or a stipulation that involves two pieces of litigation involving Lower Southampton Elementary School regarding improvements that were proposed by the Bucks County Intermediate Unit for that building. And essentially what it does is it approves a, an agreement to develop the property to provide a connector driveway to the rear of the elementary school connecting the two parking lots, which will be improved in themselves and provide additional parking to the, to the school to alleviate some of the traffic concerns at that site. The second component of the agreement is a license agreement for a directional sign that the district is providing to the township for the continued use of that sign, so.
Thank you, Mr. Torrente. Any additional comments, questions, or concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes nine to zero. Mr. Allen, please. Six point zero two.
Okay, Mr. Pierrotano. I'd like to bring a motion to the table. Six point oh two, fourth addendum to lease agreement, H V A C renovations at L S T B C I U. Whereas, the Neshamani Board of School Directors have an existing lease agreement dated August 16th, 2016, with the Bucks County Intermediate Unit Number 22, for their use of the Lower Southampton Elementary School located at Seventh School Lane, Lower Southampton Township, Bucks County, Pennsylvania. And whereas, Lesser and Lessie entered into an addendum to lease agreement dated April 24th, 2018, to extend the time period allowed to replace the H V A C system and associated electrical service upgrades to June 30th, 2019. And whereas, Lesser and Lessie entered into a second addendum to lease agreement dated January 22nd, 2019, to allow for the incorporation of a Guaranteed Energy Savings Act project in support of the H V A C system replacement, and another extension of the timeline to complete the improvements to December 31st, 2019. And whereas, Lesser and Lessie entered into a third addendum to lease agreement dated September 17th, 2019, for a six-year extension of the existing lease from July 1st, 2023 to June 30th, 2029, revising the indemnification clauses and a new extension of the GISA H V A C project time period to August 31st, 2020. And whereas, Lesser and Lessie are now amendable to an additional extension of the GISA H V A C project time period to December 31st, 2020, in order for the Lessie to complete the required lease upgrades, which are currently under construction. Now therefore be it resolved that the Neshamani Board of School Directors approves the attached fourth amendment to the lease, to be incorporated with the existing lease agreement and prior addenda collectively lease, and authorizes the board president and secretary to execute the fourth addendum in the form presented at the meeting, and the board president, secretary, solicitor, and other officers of the School District are authorized to take all action required to effectuate this motion and fourth addendum and lease.
Thank you again, Mr. Allen. Motion's been made. May I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Cirillo. Any comments, questions, or concerns? At this time, I would once again ask our solicitor to try and relieve the legalese and explain it in a more common sense manner, please.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Pierrotano. Essentially, what this addendum to the lease agreement is doing is providing an additional time period for the I U to complete the renovation work to the interior of the facility, having to do with various improvements, including the H V A C renovations required under the lease. It's extending that time period to the end of the year, which is December 31, 2020.
And this is for the I U-funded GISA project at Lower Southampton only?
That's correct, Mr. Pierrotano, yes.
All right, thank you. Any other comments, questions, or concerns? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes nine to zero. That will bring us to six point oh three. Mr. Cirillo, please.
I'd like to make a motion for six point zero three settlement agreements. Whereas, the Neshamani School District has outlined a private and confidential agreement with the families of student number 781704, 794457, and 790446. Now therefore be it resolved that the Neshamani Board of School Directors hereby approves providing for the educational programming specified in said agreement.
Thank you, Mr. Cirillo. A motion's been made. May I have a second, please?
Second.
Second by Mr. Kovitz. Any comments, questions, or concerns? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes nine to zero. Brings us to six point zero four. Mrs. Hollenbeck, please.
Six point zero four, Act 75 Tax Resolution. Whereas, Act 75 of 2020 permits school districts that impose taxes on the assessed value of real property to provide relief to taxpayers. And whereas, the Neshamani School District has determined that it is in the best interest of the district, its residents, and taxpayers for the district to provide relief to those paying taxes on the assessed value of real property located within the district. And now therefore be it resolved that the Neshamani School District hereby waives any fees or penalties associated with the late payment of the tax imposed on the assessed value of real estate provided, that the real estate tax is paid in its entirety by December 31st, 2020. Be it further resolved that the business administrator of the Neshamani School District shall immediately deliver a copy of this resolution to the township's tax collector in each municipality the Neshamani School District serves.
Thank you, Mrs. Hollenbeck. A motion's been made. May I have a second, please? Second by Mrs. Boyle. Any comments, questions, or concerns? At this time, you know, I would like to entertain discussion on this motion. I would like to make an amendment to the resolution that would also extend the 2% discount period from August 31st, 2020 to September 30th, 2020. I believe, and talking to some local businesses that have just been able to get back up and running in July, that would normally be able to take advantage of the discount period, and as well as some, you know, homeowners as well, that may need some extra time to generate income for those payments, that a little bit additional grace period, you know, is a proper thing to do. And I don't believe, you know, such an impact would be detrimental to the finances of the district. I would ask our, excuse me, our business manager if he could provide any additional comment on my amendment?
The district's tax revenues for the fiscal year, current fiscal year, for the month of July are actually ahead of schedule, which is very surprising. The, I think the discount, extended discount period would not have any effect whatsoever on the district's finances for the year. They'd be very minimal, and I think it's a good idea for the, for the board to consider that amendment, to provide some relief during this pandemic. There are a lot of areas out there, people who are struggling at this time, so I'm in favor of the, of the resolution.
Thank you for that, thank you for that comment. Mr. Torrente, if the board wasn't entertained my amendment to the resolution, how will we proceed?
You would need to, someone would need to make a motion to amend the Act 75 Tax Resolution to include an extension of the discount rate of 2% through September 30th, 2020. You would need to call a vote on that amendment and then take a vote on the original resolution as amended. So there'd be two votes.
Thank you. So it would be proper for me to make that, that, that a, that motion?
That's correct.
At this time, I would like to make a motion to amend item six point oh four, Act 75 Tax Resolution, to include, to allow that the 2% discount period be extended from August 31st, 2020 to September 30th, 2020. A motion's been made. I'd ask for a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Bowman. Any comments, questions, or concerns? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Amendment passes nine to zero. Having a motion on six point oh four, and now having a second by Mrs. Boyle, I would like to call for any comments, additional comments, questions, or concerns on that Hearing none? I'd like to have a vote, all in favor, to pass six point oh four, including the...
Mr. Pierrotano, it'd be a vote on the motion as amended.
I'm sorry. I'd like to call for a vote on the motion as amended. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes nine to zero. Thank you all for entertaining that amendment. That brings us to the other board business. Does any board member have any other board business to discuss? Hearing none, we will move to our second session of public comment. Anyone wishing to speak, please approach the podium. You have three minutes. Please state your name. Please spell your last name for the board secretary, the area in which you live, your occupation, and please no personal attacks.
Good evening, school board members and superintendent. My name is Jay Surajin. I live at 1409 Poplar Road, Feasterville. I'm a retired Lieutenant Colonel, U.S. Army, and retired instrument technician and engineer. I have found in the military that the notion, if you're not part of the solution, don't become part of the problem. This application of UV sanitization has been around since 1941, where it was first installed in some Philadelphia schools to curb the spread of measles. Buildings that had the UV fixtures installed ran about 15% of the students becoming sick. Those buildings that didn't have the UV fixtures installed ran about 50% of the students becoming sick. This is back in 1941. Prezi technology recommends, and most important, is installing the UV G I lights in the H V A C duct system in front of the existing filters, in order to kill any virus or bacteria that's trapped in the filters, and preventing the viruses from becoming recirculated back to the classrooms. Typical example of what happened just a few years ago with Legionnaires' disease. We made the situation worse, all right? This takes care of the most important situation, and that is putting the lights in front of the filters. The second and almost important is to install a type, some type of ionizing unit on the discharge side of the HVAC system, to create enough ozone to kill bacteria and virus on contact in the students' classroom. That means on the desks, on the person's clothing. Because early units cause some medical issues, the present protocol is to limit the ozone concentration to less than one part per million. Several technologies exist to create this ion exchange. I personally prefer the air scrubber by Aris, which is model number 9960051, which is one of the most popular units being installed in our area today. Installation of both of these options would make Neshamani schools part of the solution. Are there any questions?
This isn't a question and answer period. Okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else that would wish to approach the podium for public comment? Seeing none, we'll move over to a board comment. Mrs. Bowman, would you like to make any commentary?
I just want to thank Dr. McGee and all the administration for all your hard work and efforts in getting our schools up and running by November, by September 8th. And just thank you for all your hard work. It's really, it's been around the clock and effortless and tireless, and you've been doing a great job, and I just wanted to recognize everything that you're doing, so thank you, and I hope everybody enjoys the rest of their summer.
Thank you. Mrs. Boyle, would you like to make any commentary?
I just want to, want to also thank Dr. McGee and all the administration for, for all their, all their hard work.
Thank you. Mrs. Hollenbeck?
I don't have any comments at this time, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kovitz?
I'd just like to mirror both Mrs. Boyle's, Mrs. Bowman's words. I think this has been a really long haul, and we got a lot accomplished this evening. I'm very proud of that. And, and again, to all those parents that have spoken out, I know we had a lot of people last meeting that we had, that spoke out. I know that there are a lot of people that are, that, while there are many people who are doing okay during this time, there are those that are suffering, and I think it's important that we remain mindful of that, and I believe we've done, we've made several attempts to do that this evening, and hopefully that'll continue forward. We, we're, we're trying to take care of our own, and we're trying to take care of everyone as best as we can. We know that no situation during this time is going to be ideal, but we're going to give it the best we have to make sure that every student gets the best education that they can, and we can accommodate as many parent schedules out there as possible, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kovitz. Mr. Marington?
Yes, I'd also like to, to thank Dr. McGee and the entire administration of Neshamani, you know, for his tireless efforts, and I, you know, we get emails that are, you know, really long and humorous and, and pretty much on a daily basis. And, and much of this, much of what's happening here has been very innovative, and, and also, I think for the betterment of Neshamani. And, and it's, a lot of it's behind the scenes. And so I'd like to thank everybody for this. I, you know, I do have the opportunity, just in what I do, to talk to people from, from quite a few other school districts, and they're all saying, how come we're not doing what Neshamani's doing? And that's, that's become a pretty common refrain for the people that I know. So again, thank you, and let's make this thing work. We're gonna make it work soon.
Thank you. Mr. Cirillo?
No, just want to thank Dr. McGee and all the staff for all the hard work they continue to do to open the schools up as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Sullivan?
I'll pass on comment tonight.
Okay, now, at one of these meetings, I'm gonna get this right. We generally want Dr. McGee to go first, but I keep forgetting, so at this opportunity, Dr. McGee, if you have any comments you can make to the public, also, if you could take a moment to include in your comments some recent emails we got from swim parents concerning our pools?
Sure. First, I need better glasses. I gave out the question hotline number, the wrong number, 215-809-7777. I think I misread that previously. Number of concerns about the opening of our pools. Presently, our facilities aren't open to any indoor activities, both for our own students, our sports teams, and our, and the outside community, with the exception of in-season athletes. And presently, that is for the most part outside, except for our volleyball team, possibly the band going in the building to get their stuff, and then a limited number of students in the football weight room. So at some point, we will reopen our, our indoor facilities. Right now, the goal is to get ready for our staff to come back, then the students come back, and adding more people to our facilities just adds more for us to do as far as cleaning and taking... more for us to do as far as cleaning and taking care of things. So at some point, it has to happen, assuming the, the incidence of the virus stays, stays, stays low and, and we're ready to, to bring things back. That point can be sooner, sooner or later. It's a matter of if we open it for one activity, we have to open it for the basketball teams, the batting cages, et cetera. And if we open it for one community organization, we're obligated to open it for all. So it's, it's really not just a swimming thing. It's more of a, our facilities are not open, with the exception of outside facilities, or to in-season athletes at that, at the moment. So we've denied access to our basketball players, to our gym, we've denied access to our cheerleaders, to our gym. And I think it's coming to time where we need to consider reopening that. So probably sooner than later, we need to make sure that we're prepared for that additional traffic within our facilities as we prepare to open.
And could you also elaborate on, I had gotten one question from a resident referring to the health and safety plan status and the difference between each grouping of health and safety plans?
Yes, on the last meeting, August 12th, the board approved the reopening of school health and safety plan to bring the general population back. Back at the end of June, at that last meeting, the board approved, we called it the Athletic and Co-Curricular Plan, to begin to bring voluntary workouts and then our August, August start dates back. So they're two separate plans as far as what procedures are need, are need, need to be done.
Thank you, Dr. McGee.
And if I could make one more?
Yes, please do.
I just, the board seems to be thanking me and the administrative team a lot. I'd like to thank you for your support, but also behind the administrative team are dozens of, of other people, support staff, certified staff, two labor organizations who have worked with us. And I honestly cannot wait to get back the 600 teachers and the other 500 support staff members, because they're the ones that are really gonna make this work. So we, we appreciate your support, but it's really the team behind it, because what happens in an individual school, in an individual classroom, in this particular end of the building, at this hallway, comes down to the folks that work there. So that's, that's really where it's going to happen, and, and they, and they are part of the team as well. So thank you.
Thank you, Dr. McGee. Bring us to Mr. Allen.
Thank you, Mr. Perattano. Yes, I, I would repeat what everyone else has said, the administration, Dr. McGee, you've been doing a fantastic job. And I'd like to just echo what everyone else has said. It's greatly appreciated. The humor, also, it's been a tough, been a tough couple months for all of us, and the fact that we can all do our best and keep humor about it, I think speaks well of our community, and it's much appreciated. I just want to take a couple minutes, brief minutes, to address the gentleman who came and talked about the ultraviolet light and our, the ionization, bipolar ionization. We are investigating that still, sorry. And that is part of our, our plans, hopefully, going forward. At the moment, we have, I spoke to this, our last meeting, I got some feedback that I wasn't clear on some of my, my comments. What I had said is that we are in the process of upgrading our filtration system. We had what's called MERV. What MERV means, Maximum Efficiency Reporting Value. That's kind of just means, the larger the number, the tighter the weave, the more dirt it takes out. That's what it means. So we're going from a nine to a 13. It's not quite into the HEPA range. That would create a lot of back pressure on our systems. So 13 is a significant change without overburdening our, the fans and all that, because the buildings systems are balanced. If you increase resistance, you increase dry, amperage on the motors, there's things you have to adjust. This is within range of our equipment and won't be a big problem. We'll also be increasing, introducing more outdoor air. And where available, we also can control our exhaust. So again, keeping the building in a balance and bringing, introducing quote unquote cleaner air from the outside, so we're recirculating less, even though they are all going through the same filtration process. And we are, as I said, we are investigating, including ultraviolet and the bipolar ionization addition. That's an enhancement to our system. And, and by increasing outside air and exhaust, that increases air changes within the building. All positive for our, or, you know, under this situation, we're doing, oh, yes, I'm sorry. What I meant to say is we're doing that regardless of whether we go forward with the UV and bipolar. All right, that's it. I may have muddied the waters even more, I don't know. I'm sorry. I tend to, I understand it, I assume everybody else does. I apologize. And that's all I have this evening, thank you.
Thank you. I don't want to jump on all the accolades that have been given to Dr. McGee and his staff and the entire Nishamani staff. As I spoke last meeting, this is an all-in effort. Every person that's associated with this district, the role is important and is going to be required for us to successfully return our children to school. A lot of emails that I've received have been about what it is going to take for children to return to the classroom. And there's basically three basic steps. When the administration informs this board that we have met our in-school health and safety plan and that we have the adequate staffing secured, and the incident rate in our area, according to the Bucks County Department of Health, is in the low threshold that will allow in-school, this board will take up a vote, not one day sooner, not one day later, to return our children to the classroom. We will only do it under those conditions. So while the area seems to be making great progress, we're staying very low in our incident rates. We need our, those materials we're missing for our health and safety plan, and we did significant staffing this evening and tonight's agenda. We still need more to go, but we're in a lot better shape than a lot of other districts. And at this particular point in time, I feel very confident on the timetable that, that Dr. McGee has laid out. And I would hope that everybody will just stay patient. And please, keep us, keep yourselves informed by looking at the information that Dr. McGee has available and is constantly posting on the, on the website. I would ask that, that you start to take advantage of the new contact and question numbers, so Dr. McGee cannot have to answer 400 emails every day. But I again applaud him for the effort that he goes to, to help everyone be informed. The only other issue that came up in concerns, and we are talking with the, the administration regarding what happens if we don't go back to school. It is the intention of this board, as it was prior, to keep Nishamani fully staffed to the point where it's no longer feasible. We did that in the, during the springtime. It's the intention of this board to continue to do that. We don't want to see anyone laid off, anyone furloughed. If we can avoid it, we're gonna avoid it. But there is a possibility that there may come a point in time, depending upon which way this goes, that we may not be able to keep that, that hope alive. But right now, the board wants to stand by our employees. They dedicated themselves in the Nishamani, they dedicated themselves to be here and to come back to school, and we want you to know that we're here supporting you as well. So in saying that, I did, one last thing, I did get some questions regarding Catholic schools or private schooling and bus support. The district is formulating that now, and very shortly we should be able to release some information as far as the private school busing arrangements go. So just, everybody stay safe. Thank you all for participating, and Nishamani will get through this, and we'll make it happen, and our kids are gonna get back in class, so. Saying that, I'd like to call for adjournment. Motion's been made. Second by Mrs. Hollenbeck, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes nine to zero. Good evening, everyone.